I'd like to call this school committee meeting, May 24th, 2021, to order. I would like to entertain a motion to call the May 24th school committee meeting to order at 6:00 PM, be a roll call vote, I'll go in alphabetical order. Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblom?
Yes.
And Mr. Long?
Yes.
In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12th, 2020, town of Citewood Public Meeting shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded and will be posted following the meeting. Public comment will be available via Zoom. Community members can also email our new chair tonight, I would say, with any questions. So the first agenda item is the reorganization of the school committee. You're probably wondering why I'm taking the lead, and that's one time a year for this meeting. Per policy, BDA, the school committee will organize annually following the annual town election. I, the superintendent of schools, will preside at the organizational meeting until the chair is elected. A chair and a vice chair will be elected in open session by a vote of the majority of those members present. The chair will rotate from year to year by vote of the committee and may not serve as chair for more than one consecutive one-year term. The chair will preside at all meetings of the school committee. In the absence of the chair, the vice chair will preside. Or, in the absence of the chair and the vice chair, the committee may designate a member to be temporary chair. Now, I'm going to go over the duties of the chair. And per policy of BDB, the duties of the following positions are as follows. Duties of the chair. Chair of the Citewood School Committee has the same powers as any other member of the committee, to vote upon all measures coming before it, to offer resolutions, and to discuss questions. He or she will perform those duties that are consistent with his or her office and those required by law, state regulations in this committee. And carrying out these responsibilities, the chairperson will. Sign the instruments, acts, and orders necessary to carry out state requirements and the will of the committee. Consult with the superintendent in the planning of the committee's agendas. Confer with the superintendent on crucial matters that may occur between committee meetings. Appoint subcommittees subject to committee approval. Call special meetings of this committee as found necessary. Be public spokesperson for the committee at all times, except that this responsibility is specifically delegated to others. And be responsible for the orderly conduct of all committee meetings. As the presiding officer at all meetings of the committee, the chair will call the meeting to order at the appointed time, announce the business to come before the committee in its proper order, enforce the committee's policies relating to the order of business and the conduct of the meetings, recognize persons who desire to speak, and protect the speaker who has the floor from disturbance or interference. Explain what the effect of a motion would be if this is not clear to the members. Restrict discussion to the question when the motion is before the committee. Answer all parliamentary inquiries. Put motions to a vote stating definitely and clearly the vote and result thereof. Duties of the vice chair. The vice chair of the Citewood School Committee will act in the absence of the chair as presiding officer of the committee and will perform such other duties as may be delegated or assigned to him or her. Secretary. Secretary shall sign minutes in diplomacy and will take minutes in the absence of the clerk. And finally, the clerk. The clerk will keep or cause to be kept an accurate journal of all committee meetings, will comply with the state law and committee policy regarding notification of meetings, and will render such reports as may be required by the state or the town. So, at this time, I will entertain motions for the following position. School committee chairperson. I'll nominate Mike Long as to be elected as chairman of the Citewood School Committee for the upcoming year.
I second that.
Okay, is there, Mr. Hayes, thank you, and Ms. Lindblom, second, thank you. Is there any discussion?
No, I think he'll be a great chair.
Me too.
I agree.
No pressure.
Yeah, he was the vice chair, so.
Well, thank you, well, then I'll put it to a vote, and I'll do, as before, I'll put it in alphabetical order for the nomination of Mr. Mike Long as chairperson of the school committee for the next year. Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblom?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
So the vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Michael Long, you are the school committee chair for getting tonight for the next year. And I will gladly turn the meeting over to you for the remainder of the agenda.
All right, thank you Superintendent Burkhart, thank you all. So next will be, I'll entertain a motion for the position of vice chair of the school committee.
I'll make a motion that Nicole Brandalini be elected to be the vice chair of the Citewood School Committee for the next year.
Second?
Second?
Second by Mr. Gates, all right, do we have a roll call vote? Gates?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Lindblom?
Yes.
I say yes, and Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
All right, congratulations. Next, I will entertain a motion for the role of secretary of the school committee. Y'all got quiet quick.
Is that a, is that like a one-year limit, too?
You know, that's a good question, I don't know. I think only the chair is.
We only limit the chair right now.
Okay. I mean, I don't see anybody jumping up, but.
You want to keep it?
Yeah, I don't mind doing it, I don't, it's, yeah, I don't mind still doing it.
All right, I'll nominate Janice Lindblom as the secretary of the Citewood School Committee for the next current, coming year.
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Brandalini, roll call vote. Brandalini?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Long, yes, and Lindblom?
Yes.
I think that means you have to sign all the diplomas in the coming days, too, Janice, so congratulations.
I think, Bill, just, I think that the, we should look at that, I think that the diplomas say chairperson, so that wouldn't equal the policy, correct?
Yeah, it's chair and the superintendent.
Both, right?
Yeah.
I think it's just a chair.
No, no, no.
I thought it was the secretary, too, I'm sorry.
I believe, I believe it is the secretary as well, but I'll confirm.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's, and it's. I signed them all a couple of days ago. And Bill and the principal, yeah, there's four.
Two, it's two school committee members?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, moving on then, I will entertain a motion to appoint the clerk of the school committee.
Is it Jeannie Mullins?
Yeah, it's been the past couple of years, it's been Ms. Mullins, who's been our clerk and taken all the notes.
I'll make a motion that the school committee elect Jeannie Mullins as the clerk of the school committee for the next coming year.
I second.
Second by Ms. Lindblom, roll call vote again. Long, yes. Lindblom?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
And Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Thank you all, welcome back, Jeannie. Okay, and the next, last order of business for this is having two warrant signers on the committee that would allow us to have someone go into the office and sign warrants if we need to, we don't necessarily have to sign them, especially since we're not meeting in person. I think, Janice, you were one of the two people that did that this year.
Yeah.
Is that something?
I could do it. Can't nominate myself, but I'd be interested.
All right, I nominate.
I'll make a motion that the Janice Lindblom and Peter Gates be the designated signatory of the school committee on warrants for the coming year.
Well, Peter, do you want to be the primary?
Sure.
I'll be backup then.
Perfect, do your second.
Second.
Okay, great, roll call vote. Ms. Brandalini?
Yes.
Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblom?
Yes.
And Long, yes. All right, thank you all, welcome to your new post. So next, we're going to celebrate student learning with Mr. Jim Thomas, Department Chair for the Fine Arts Department.
Great, thank you, everyone. Thank you to the school committee and our district administration for the opportunity to present tonight. So the hope is prepare a video which will go off without a hitch, otherwise we've got an issue, but here's hoping. So just give me a second to get that ready. Y'all can see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. From the wiseness of her little feet, to the shining of her hair. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity for us to present tonight. It's really my pleasure to highlight some of the happenings in the Fine Arts Department. And when I thought about trying to frame this evening and celebrating student learning, I really thought about two things. I thought about the challenges that we've all encountered throughout this year, but also the opportunities that have come about as a result. Some of the things that we'll talk about this year are the ways, the new ways in which we've accessed the curriculum for students, sustaining and building relationships with students in and amidst remote, hybrid, and combination thereof, and making kids feel a part of this community that we call a music, art, or drama community. We want students to express themselves regardless of the mode of learning, be creative, and demonstrate their understanding. And finally, but certainly not least importantly, we want to celebrate this as a community.
So there's no question that all teachers faced so many challenges this year, but one of the first challenges that we confronted was providing access to our curriculum for students. In this slide here, you see elementary music and art teachers preparing over 1,300 learning kits for remote learners. They did a phenomenal job, and it was no small, no small task. In this slide, you're going to see a grade seven music student accompany her mother on the song "Let It Be." That in and of itself, I think you'll find really pretty neat to watch, but really, the backstory is equally impressive. Ms. Davis, who's our grade seven and eight music teacher, developed a program to provide access to students who would not otherwise have pianos or guitars at home. She appealed to the community, and of course, they definitely responded by providing instruments for kids. So, when we talk about access to curriculum, none of this video would be possible without the loner program that Ms. Davis put in place. Enjoy.
Speaking words of wisdom, let it be. Let it be, let it be, let it be, let it be. Whisper words of wisdom, let it be.
Continuing with the theme of challenges and opportunities, one of the challenges that our performing groups had is, of course, that we couldn't perform inside. This led us to think about things differently. In this case, our elementary instrumental teachers took the concert outside, and we started celebrating concerts in a parking lot style. And what that looked like was pretty interesting. Cars pulled in every other space, and students stood by their car and performed, with family members either remaining in their vehicle or socially distancing outside. It was a way to build community, celebrate making music, and everyone had a blast. Throughout the pandemic, one thing that's been very important to the Fine Arts Department is still keeping connections with our community. In this example, our students in grade one and two from Wamper Tuck made nearly 100 cards that were included in care packages to seniors, and really, the message was, hope happens here. I think this is a powerful example of connecting with community. Like all teachers, the elementary band program had to redesign their curriculum to meet a virtual platform. These pictures show Mr. Silva teaching a virtual band lesson to a group of students. And also, we noticed that there's a screenshot of a webpage that was designed by this team to make sure that the questions and the answers to things like renting an instrument, group assignments, things along those lines were answered and act very accessible to parents and students. So working together, there's no question that we are greater than our individual parts, and so anytime there's opportunity for collaboration amongst teachers, we celebrate that. In this example, you're going to see Ellen Davis and Peter Mont, both teachers at the Cushing Elementary School, collaborating on the song "Three Primary Colors." Enjoy.
Red, 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 red. Yellow, 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 yellow. Blue, 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 blue. These are the primaries, it's true. Oh, they are three primary colors.
So in this picture, you see a flipped rehearsal. We had to reimagine our rehearsal space and the way in which we conduct rehearsals. Students are now placed in the audience 10 feet apart to meet DSE requirements, and we had to meet the challenges of logistics to make sure that performing groups from both Gates and the high school could work within this beautiful auditorium. In the next couple slides, we celebrate some of the work that took place at the Gates Middle School in our art program. This first example is a remote assignment which dealt with digital mosaic self-portraits. And the mastery learning objective for this assignment was that students would be able to show their knowledge of using Google Drawings to create a digital mosaic self-portrait. And this work was inspired by the style of artist Alma Woodsey-Thomas. Just unbelievable work by our kids. In this next example, we see some in-person work by our seventh grade students, and in this, in this example, we have students sculpting and designing a functional clay lab paint palette. And this is inspired by animal symbolism using basic clay techniques. So I think what you're noticing here is that the quality of work, whether remote or in person, is equally impressive, certainly a testimony to our teachers. So the challenge of displaying student work is an obvious challenge this year in the pandemic, and this next example, I think, is great from the Citewood High School art team. They took advantage of a platform called Padlet, which they've used a little bit in the past, but for this year, they really expanded their use. And as you see, it gives an opportunity to digitally display each student's portfolio, and not only can they evaluate their own work, but they can share it with family members and beyond. We are fortunate in Citewood to have a drama program in the school day at the Gates School, and what you're going to see next is some examples of remote learning where students are learning about delivering a monologue, investigating musical theater, and what it takes to create a scene. Enjoy.
It's not an ordinary matter. She didn't teach me to stir seashells or practice my embroidery. We did different things, reading, science, sports, all sorts of exercise, both physical and mental. Mother said we were free to do anything at Fanduel and be anyone.
In this next example, we're going to look at a montage, if you will, of some musical performances that are virtual. Each one of these performances took the teacher that put it together an enormous amount of work and time and effort, but it just really demonstrates their commitment to connecting with the community, providing students an opportunity to feel as though they're part of something bigger than just themselves, which is one of the biggest attributes that the Fine Arts has to offer students, is to feel connected, to express themselves, and to feel like they are part of something bigger than themselves. So enjoy this next montage of virtual music performances.
I look at you, what do I see? You're not that different to me.
of. I got you holding on.
So once again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present this evening, and I would be remiss if I did not thank my outstanding staff that I have the opportunity to work with for going above and beyond throughout the year to meet the needs of our students. Of course, I'd like to thank our students who are, in a word, awesome, and they have been resilient and have worked to be flexible throughout the year. And last but not least, our families for their support throughout this entire challenging year. Thank you, have a good evening.
So I hope that you enjoyed that, it kind of gives you a glimpse of the happenings that have taken place throughout our year. And, you know, I think despite all the challenges that we've faced, we've made the most of it, and hope you enjoyed it.
Yeah, Mr. Thomas, I thought that was, that was a great presentation, and it's great to see how seamless it was from last year, you know, all the great work that your staff has done to this year, it was the same level. And even, you know, seeing my kids when they were remote with the, with those packets for art and music, and being able to still create and, you know, that interaction with the staff. They've done a great job this year with, with everything they've had to deal with, so thank you for, for sharing those instances with us.
Absolutely, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments in the committee for Mr. Thomas?
No, just thanks for your leadership, Jim. Tremendous job by everybody, and we're lucky to have you here in Citewood, and you're doing a tremendous job, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, so next on our agenda is the student report. Ms. Reese, I think you're the only one on, out of our three, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, yeah, I was only me tonight, which is okay. With the year winding down, students have more athletic and academic responsibilities. However, the end of the year is always the best time for us. The warmer weather and the good feelings in the year, oh, we love student spirits, and it's always just such a good time. Students are currently taking AP exams at the high school. A majority of the exams are remote and taken at home, but a few, like the physics one that happened today, are going to take in on principal. And a few kids I talked to said that those have been going well, so better than last year, and there's a lot less technical difficulties, which is really great. Last Friday, or, yeah, last Friday, March 26th, May 26th, oh my goodness, my notes. Last Friday, May 26th, is the last day for our seniors, which was such a bittersweet day, but a lot of fun with the high spirits, like I was saying earlier. Next Wednesday, June 2nd, new members of the National Honor Society, Math Honor Society, and World Language Honor Society will be inducted, and meetings will begin, and officer positions will be elected for those. And finally, in the spring, spring sports are in full spring, and currently, baseball has a record of one to two, softball zero to three, boys across two and oh, girls across two and one. Both tennis teams are three and oh, and wrestling is zero and one as of last night, and that's all.
And I've seen the baseball team practice, and actually, a lot of the teams playing on the new field, and they seem to be really enjoying them, which is great to see.
Yeah, I actually went out on the fields for the first time this past week, and they're just, they're so much fun, they're really great facilities.
I'm glad our students get to use them this year.
Mm-hmm, me too.
Are there any other questions or comments for Celia?
I'll sit.
Thanks for coming, Celia, we appreciate your report.
Thanks, everyone.
So next on the agenda is the leadership report from Superintendent Burkhart.
Thank you, Chairman Long, and my apologies, I lost power, so I'm switching over to my phone, so thank goodness for technology here. Can you hear me okay, Ms. Blom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Peter Gates for his dedication, commitment, and tireless work on behalf of the Citewood Public Schools in the role of chairman for the last school year. Our students and community under the most challenging of times. We're lucky to have him at the helm. He committed to training early on for the school committee and the new superintendent, which has paid, in my opinion, dividends in how well meetings are run and how respect and trust are always paramount. He also focused on improving school and town relationships, which has been another huge success, and something I personally have benefited from. And the countless hours spent on having to navigate very stressful but crucial decisions that the entire committee had to deal with and make, but also had a positive impact on the growth of our district. So I just want to give a huge shout out to Mr. Gates, and thank you for a year-on-year leadership as chair. Segueing into congratulating new chair, Mr. Mike Long. If you don't know, he will begin his fourth term on the committee this evening after securing the seat at last Saturday's election. I want to congratulate Mr. Long for his continued dedication and commitment to the student staff and community of Citewood. We're very fortunate to have you for another three years. I'd also like to thank Mr. Richard Taft for running for a seat on the school committee and his continued passion for excellence in education for all the students in Citewood. So thank you all. Next, I'd like to give a brief update for the wellness report. I do this on my morning committee meeting and don't often bring these numbers because they've been, you know, pretty, going pretty well for us, but I remember the days when there were 500 people at these meetings in August, and we'd meet weekly, and these numbers were skyrocketing, and then through the winter. So last week, we had one case in the school district, and I believe there were 10 in the town, so good job, everybody, we've come a long way, but I did want to share that good news, and we continue to move in the right direction. As far as masks, just a quick update, this was sent home, but they're no longer required outside for students at recess and outside classes or athletic events. Specific details on graduation, we'll get a little bit tonight. As part of my guest lecture series, I have Dr. Maguire here to share some of the end-of-year activities for seniors that I think are very important. And an update on vaccinations, we've been very, very fortunate this year to have access to the Marshfield Fieldgrounds testing ground, and I want to, I think it goes to saying, as I mentioned earlier, the relationship with our town and the work of, and collaboration of our town administrator, Mr. Brodeau, who's helped our teachers get access to sites of testing and also now our students. And we had appointments recently for any child over 12 and over, and they were offered for May 20, 21st, and 22nd of this week at the Marshfield Fieldgrounds, all thanks to Jim and to the folks at Marshfield who coordinated that. So thank you very much, and also to our nurse leader, Kelly Roach, and our, our great nurses for us communicating that to our families. And then I have a. And then I have a Celia shout out I wanted to share, just, you know, it was sent to me and it really, it really made me feel good. I get a lot of these, which is a testament to our great community, especially in tough times. But this one was from Julie McLaughlin about our students, and I thought I'd share it with you. I've had the privilege of working with the Situate High School students at the food pantry for the last couple of years. Toy person, they have been polite, professional, and dedicated to the task. They have sorted and stored food, harvested fresh vegetables from a local organic farm, wrote letters of thanks to veterans for Veterans Day, and organized and carried heavy boxes of food, all while taking care to socially distance and wear masks. Some have come once or twice, some have come often, but all have done a fantastic job in a difficult year. And they have our full gratitude and admiration. So I want to thank Ms. McLaughlin for sharing that. Thank you for our students to continue to demonstrate their caring, loving, and givingness to our community and to each other. And they set the tone for all of us. So thank you. The next activity I have up is, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Maguire. I was going to share a few end-of-year events happening at the high school because it's a busy time. But Dr. Maguire has a presentation that's brief, but also hits home to the point. So I want her to be up next. Thank you, Dr. Maguire.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkett. Good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for taking the time to review this with me. It's a very exciting time at the high school. Right now, we have students who are finishing up senior year, working with teachers one-on-one. The majority of students have finished up on Friday, but we do have kind of our exam days where students are working hard to get to the finish line. We also have AP exams running this week, and two of our three MCAS are done. Our freshmen will meet the first week of June, well, the 9th and 10th of June to complete biology. So between now and then, we have a law packed in here. On Tuesday, the first graduation rehearsals begin, and the seniors are very excited about a celebration at the school outside and in the large gym, to be able to be together with their class as a whole. When we made these plans, this was going to be, aside from graduation, probably the only time they could get together due to restrictions which have lightened up since we made the plans. But to go outside, have some fun, see one another, have some raffles, have some games. They have a few food trucks prepared. Parents have really helped to support this day. And they just wanted, if you ask the seniors what they want the most, it's just to be with one another, to celebrate and commemorate the end of the year. So we start that next week. Wednesday morning, we have 122 NHS students, as Celia mentioned, 16 Math Honor Society, and 82 World Language Honor Society students being inducted. That will be live streamed through Situate Television, which is great. And then the seniors will come in for their yearbook signings and the Very Important Choices program that the Steverman family comes in to do, talking about just the repercussions of choices and making good decisions around graduation time and into the, as they set out, away from Situate potentially. And then they receive their graduation materials. They also are having a senior night out. It's, we've been joking that it's the dinner not dance, also based on restrictions, but that's another celebratory way for them to gather together. And they'll have a dinner over at the River Club. On Thursday, one last rehearsal, the car parade from last year due to COVID was so popular that the seniors asked to do that again, and we're going to do that. You are invited to attend. School committee and central office staff are between the tennis courts and gates in the high school. But they get to go through the campus. There's a place for elementary teachers, middle school, and high school teachers to do a farewell with them, and that's a special event for them the night before graduation. We have the big day. Graduates are going to come in. We have a 6 o'clock ceremony on Friday, the 4th. The guidelines have changed. Just last week, we are going to allow each graduate to receive six tickets on the field. So this is a new field, new turf, new track. So we're asking guests to sit in the bleachers or behind the fence, but within the greater fence, so they're in the space. Graduates will be on the field, sitting together as a class. And again, six tickets per graduate brings us up at the larger end of our capacity, but within the limits of what the state, the Department of Education, and the Situate Board of Health all felt comfortable with for our town. So we did consult with them in making these decisions, and we're really excited to have this, this opportunity. The rain day is also outside on Saturday. It's just a case of inclement weather. We have a couple additional events that we just want to let you know about as well. Wednesday and Friday, the 16th and 18th of June, we're doing a celebration for our 9th and 10th graders and then 11th grade especially together. We want to acknowledge and celebrate the accomplishments of our students that, who embody the core values of the high school, serve, achieve, invest, and learn. So the students are able to be nominated throughout the year by their peers or by their teachers. And students can also nominate teachers for these awards, and they get given out at this. And it's similar to, they'll lunch in the large cafeteria and then be able to go outside and spend some time with each other. As we conclude the school year and move into next year, talking about the social-emotional, talking about the bonding of the class and the students, we wanted to give them a little bit of time to do this after finals. And the same with the juniors. They're looking to bond together as that rising senior class. So they're really excited to do that as well. And then we have other class awards, which will happen on June 16th. These are awards that are given out by each department and every course that we offer at the high school. So there is a student recipient for each grade and each subject area and each course designation. So lots going on at the high school. We're really excited about the, the opportunity to have a more traditional-style graduation with music, with speakers, with some family members. It will also be livestreamed so that those who can't attend with the six tickets are able to view the graduation from home. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Maguire. I've got one more thing, but before I do that, does anybody have any, any of the school committee members have any questions at this point?
Bill, I have a question about the, just the COVID vaccine, since it's opened up to 12 and up. I know a lot of people have taken their kids to get their first shot. Are you, are you, or has the team that you're, you and Kelly discussed putting on any guidance about what to do when kids get the second shot? And if, like, I know that the next day, they might have some of the, you know, the, the effects of the vaccine doing its job but not feeling well. I know, you know, working in healthcare, we were told, you need to come to work after the second. So I just didn't know if, you know, if you're planning on putting on any guidance. Because I imagine three weeks from now, there'll be a lot of kids getting that second shot.
Yeah. We've talked, we've talked about it, but we haven't, excuse me. We've talked about it, but we haven't sent it out yet, but I think it's a real good idea. So we, we can certainly do that. It's, it's helpful, I think, for everybody, especially those, you know, that haven't gone through it, to get some guidance on that. So yeah, good advice. Thank you. We can do that.
Can I jump in as well? Just quickly, I know we have had a number of students get their second shot at the high school. And we are happy to tell them and their families that if a student is sick, to take it as a sick day. If you're feeling lousy, it's not the time to drag to the computer for remote learning. And we understand that with the second shot. If they feel well enough, they should be in school. But if they're not experiencing symptoms, if they are experiencing, it certainly is a sick day, and it's one that would be excused with a parent note. So we're anticipating that, and we're making arrangements for that. We just don't want them to feel compelled to have to go on. A sick day can still be a sick day, and that's okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Maguire.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for? Thank you, Dr. Maguire. I'm going to finish up with a curriculum update and turn this over to Ms. Arnold.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkett. Thank you, school committee. I just wanted to have an opportunity to provide you with a few updates, a few DESI programs that we're able to take advantage of. And they are a social studies pilot and a math acceleration program. So the social studies pilot is for grades, for grade five. And we received notice last week that the Cushing School received approval to participate in the social studies curriculum pilot. The second one is the math acceleration program for 2021. This is something open to all, all schools, all grades. And what it, I will explain what the grant would encompass. But it's basically to make up for all of the learning loss that students have experienced in math especially. So for the social studies curriculum pilot, Cushing's grade five team will participate over the next two years. The team receives professional development to support the use of the materials that DESI provides. And the team will provide critical feedback to DESI because the, the goal of DESI is to release these open source units, just all schools across the Commonwealth, which is the way we found out about Eureka, by the way. So Eureka started out as Engage New York, and it was a program that the Department of Education in New York had begun. And that Kathy Elych had been doing research and came across this Eureka program, starting out as Engage New York. So you never know. We could be, Situate could be part of some, the next great social studies program. Whoops, sorry about that. The math acceleration cap, grant is, comprises three different components. So you can use the funding in three different ways. You can use it by implementing a summer academy or a digital and conceptual supplement for students to access, or a math core curriculum. And we determined that the third option, the math core curriculum, best suits our needs. And that's because we have not updated the math curriculum in, I believe, 10 years at the middle school. It may have been 11. And Liz Grindel and I have been speaking about it along with Kathy Elych and thought that we could find some continuity if we were able to purchase or have access to, because this is free next year, we get the grant, have access to the same materials that we use K through 5. So as you know, we use the Eureka program, grades K through 5 for math. And Eureka goes all the way up on for, until grade eight. And so if we had that continuity, that vertical alignment, we thought that would be the best option, the best way we could apply this, this funding. And we get free access. DESI, DESI pays the vendors who provide access to all of the programs, all of their materials. They provide professional development. They produce data that we can use to track student progress and provide evidence of student learning and growth. If we receive the grant, we will expand the use of Great Minds for all grades 6 through 12. Great Minds is Eureka. And ZERN for grades 6 through 8, which we also use in the elementary school. And ZERN is a really good program. It's a dynamic program. And that, which means that it responds to students' answers when they solve something on it using their digital platform. They solve a problem, the program's responsive and, and helps them work through to get the correct answer, rather than just marking it wrong. I'd say the whole, if we receive the grant in its entirety, we could do both of these things. But the grant is also structured in that it's coming out in different phases, so, and amounts. It's a competitive grant, but we think we might be able to get it on the second or third round of the, of the grant dissemination approvals. So I'd like to thank Liz Grindel for putting it together, the math acceleration statement of interest, and also Megan Gregory and the, for the social studies pilot, as well as the grade five teams across the district.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold.
Any questions?
Mike, I had one question for Jen, if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Jen. That all sounds great. But can you describe the social studies curriculum? Are there going to be new books? Or are they providing materials? What is DESI doing?
Well, DESI is going to, they're providing, they're writing curriculum.
Okay.
And yes, they will provide materials free. So it's not the same as, as getting a program. It's, it, it's just that they're writing a curriculum and, and developing resources that they want to use along with the curriculum. So we don't, it's not, we don't have to pay for anything, again, like the math grant, but it's not, it's not a program like the math grant is, if that makes any sense.
And is the goal September 21 for this rollout?
Yes.
And when do, when do you think you'll see it? With, Situate will see it. You're going to be on a B.
We'll see it beginning July 1.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up question, Mike?
I'm done. Yeah.
So is there, like, could you maybe talk about the, what, comparing what we're using now for the social studies program to what is the programs, the material that will be provided?
Sure. Well, there are a couple of updates to the social study standards. One is the big emphasis on civics. And we, at the elementary levels, we don't really, we haven't written curriculum units of study for civics. So that's one of the advantages we'd have through this. And also, the social study standards were updated three years ago now. And we really, and we've been trying to adjust the curriculum accordingly. But this will really give us a good opportunity to focus on at least grade five intensely and develop those, that important civics units of study. Those are important.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Arnold?
I'll say.
That concludes my report tonight. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Superintendent Burkett. Were there any other questions for the superintendent? I actually had two. First, for the graduation, can we share that livestream site for people in the town to know when, so if they want to watch graduation, they can? I know in the past, it's been a big event for all in the town. So just making sure everyone has it, I think will be a good thing we can do. And then Superintendent Burkett, regarding the vaccines, I know, you know, the town administrator's done a great job with you getting those shots for our students. Is that something that he's going to continue to try to do over the course of the summer? Or, and can families expect that? Or is it going to be more based on how many people sign up if he, if we're able to get the shots?
Yeah, I think as, as more and more become available, he'll push them our way if needed, certainly. So anytime we've asked, he's come through. So we've usually gotten responses from our nurses on, you know, well, the first, every time there's a new age bracket or group, for example, the teachers were first, we asked for that, then the students, to the older kids. And then we asked for that, we got that. Then we went for the younger kids, and we got that too. So if we find the need that there's more students or staff that need that, we certainly can reach out. And he's been willing every time to come through for us.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. And we can certainly share, we'll make sure we get that link out on all our social media and to all our communities for graduation.
Okay, great. So next on the agenda is the first opportunity for public comment. If you want to raise your hand, I cannot unmute you unless I'm allowed to speak. As usual, people just need to state their name and either their address or the school they're associated with. Mr. Taft.
You hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you. Lots change in two weeks. Congratulations, Mike. Congratulations on being the chair and the election. I'd like to say Um, I'd like to say, uh, you know, one of the things that I have spoke up about and that comes up frequently from time to time in this meeting is a part of the anti-racist statement that the school committee has adopted, specifically the part that says, "We commit to proactively uprooting the systemic racism that currently exists in, in the Situate public schools." A few days, and I spoke up about this months ago, back in October, and have received a fair amount of criticism for it. A few days before the election, Mike wrote, "This committee has never stated, nor does any individual member believe that SPS is racist." I think it's obvious to anybody that those two statements are in conflict. I think in the interest of improving town relationships and getting people to fully agree with, uh, that's, it's only reasonable to get rid of that part of the statement. It doesn't state it's not consistent to what's going on in our school committee, it's not consistent to what I believe most of the people here agree to, and it's a very simple thing to eliminate to improve relationships. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taft. We can definitely take a look at that. Any other comments from the public? There is one additional opportunity later in the meeting. If there are none, we'll move on to old business, which is the 2021-2022 school calendar. Ms. Brandalini.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Um, all right, so this is, uh, we're going to talk about our first page of our school calendar again, and this is an issue that is somewhat personal for me and something that is, uh, change that I think will be welcomed in our community. So as an Italian-American woman, I'm married an Italian, and I'm also, my maiden name's Calucci. So I've been following the legislative efforts in the House and Senate to designate the first Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day for years now. Uh, I've also been proactive groupiticians for Italians for IPD and believe celebrating the resiliency of indigenous peoples is a more uplifting and truthful history than honoring the legacy of a man who conquered and enslaved people and was part of a genocide. So according to this group, which I am a part of actively, the, they say that we honor our ancestors by honoring indigenous peoples, and I believe this too. We honor our own ancestors who persevered in this country despite being victimized for their ethnicity, and I feel a responsibility to the children of Situate, my own kids, to support SPS efforts to teach accurate history here. SPS grads have asked for this change many, many times through emails and their advocacy, even at school committee meetings. Current students have talked about it as well, and parents, and stakeholders in our community. Our administration is very supportive of our efforts to further our DEI work as well. Through this work and research, I've reached out to Indigenous Peoples' Day Massachusetts, that's Indigenous Peoples' Day, MA, and have had discussions with representatives there. So much of this includes guidance on, you know, how to talk to people in our community who might be hesitant or resistant to, resistant to such a change as this has been the norm for a long time, having Columbus Day on our calendars. So, uh, and I've also been working to connect with our enrichment colleagues at Plymouth Plantation, who have been partners in our district for a very long time to bring indigenous education into our elementary schools. Um, I've not been able to connect with them yet, but I'm still working on it. The school committee effort to make the name change on the calendar is just an initial step here. We also, um, you know, we don't implement or develop curriculum as a school committee. We are simply looking to make a policy or a calendar district change, and then we would collaborate with indigenous voices. We need to center indigenous voices as we go forward with this work, it's vital. And in doing so, collaborating with our teachers and staff and our community, we'll be able to bring true and accurate history to Situate public schools and celebrate the resiliency of native people. To further the point, um, let's see, we also have, uh, through our Mass Association of School Committees, there are 22 other districts who have come forward in a list that Mass has collaborated with this spring, who have made the change already on their calendars that I'm aware of. That's their current list of collaborators, could be more, but that's what we have right now. Uh, one of these districts is Newton, they're the only one so far who I've seen through my research that has both made a townwide change as well as a school calendar change. I think it would be great if we could join them in this effort, and I do have hopes that a bill will pass this time through the state legislature as well to make this a statewide holiday. There's other work that can be done, obviously, that I fully support through our town DEI committee and would love to be a part of and help, helpful, and I happen to collaborate with that and anything else that we can do to get this done. So, um, that being said, I guess, to open it up to the school committee for any other comments or discussion, and if anyone wanted to make a motion.
I had one question, Mike, if I may.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Nicole, could you, could you repeat where it stands on Beacon Hill? You said something about three years, and I missed that.
Yeah, so unfortunately, when this legislation was brought, brought forward in 2019, 2020, it did not pass, so it's being brought forth again in 2021 with hopes that it does pass. It's actually part of a five-piece, um, there's five different bills to recognize indigenous people, and one of which is the creation of this specific holiday and the change from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. So the legislation still exists, it just hasn't passed through the legislature yet.
And is there any idea when that might be brought forward?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure. It just pretty much, they just say stay tuned and wait for updates as they come available. Hopefully, I believe I read that there's some work being done this summer to make some progress there.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, in one of the emails that we actually got as a school committee from a member of the town, it had the link that it could take you down to the legislature, and there was no date listed on it, so I didn't.
Yeah, I, I just didn't know, because I, I get that, both State House updates and, and I just didn't recall, or I didn't know if Nicole had any new.
Yeah, last I knew, it hadn't made it through subcommittees.
Okay.
Hadn't even made it as far as, as that, unfortunately. But many states have passed this, there's a list, probably about 10 or 12 at least.
Yep.
So the work continues, and, and I'm also, I'm always looking for updates, too.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
The only other thing, if, if I may, Mike, just say, and then, I'm sorry, Janice, we've been talking about this for two or three years, and, uh, I think 2021 is a good year to start, in my opinion.
Uh, Janice?
No, I just wanted to thank Nicole for doing all that homework on this. Um, you know, I, I did click on, we got some, you know, e-mails from people who are supportive of this change, but also wanted to make sure that we, you know, were doing, you know, going through the right channels to make sure we did it correctly, which is just super helpful. And I, you know, went to one of those websites and that, the, went through the FAQs, and it's every, you know, Nicole's already done everything, so, thank you.
Well, thanks, Janice, but I haven't done everything, but I appreciate your, your words. I think this is just our first step, and I think with the team that we have in our district and our administration, and Mr. Adams is here too, if he wants to jump in at any time, that, you know, this is just our first step, and then the next step would be much more, um, you know, the good stuff, you know, getting, getting this to students and teaching them about accurate and, and true history and making sure that they graduate with the right information, and no matter how, um, you know, unfortunate that information may be, better to have the truth than, than not, certainly, so.
I wasn't sure when I could speak in that, I'm, I'm just trying to follow the rules. So, like, I'll just take a moment and just, uh, just compliment what has been shared by Janice already, already regarding the work Nicole has done, and to learn that this has been on the, the docket for about three years, and it's coming to a head now, that means a lot of work and conversation, and, um, things have happened to get to this point. Um, I would say that adhering to the voice of indigenous people and giving agency to those voices is critical and was really helpful, and, uh, and will prove to be really helpful in the appropriate execution of this. Additionally, with this, typically what goes hand in hand with this is a land acknowledgement as well, that, there's a statement that just gets, that allows folks to acknowledge that the land that we're on is, was inhabited by indigenous folks first, and you just honor and respect them, and just acknowledge that. And that's really it for that, and you just post it on, um, the, the pages of where we want to, so to speak. And, um, this is usually just a helpful piece that, um, further cements what's happening. It's really about honoring and respect more than anything else. So, thanks to folks for doing that and having us assist further.
And, and Mr. Adams, you can jump in at any time. You're always welcome to weigh in during these meetings.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on the topic?
Well, we're just, we're just voting on the name change on the calendar at this point, correct?
Correct.
Correct, we are not changing anything else about page one of the calendar.
I'll make a motion that we amend the calendar for the 21-22 school year to delete Columbus Day. What is the date next year? Or this fall?
I just go with the first, the first Monday in October.
First Monday in October, we remove Columbus Day and insert Indigenous People's Day.
And that is October 11th, Mike.
October 11th.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Janice. Roll call vote, Gates?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
Uh, Long, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
And Ms. Limblon?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes 5 to 0. Nicole, thank you for putting all that information together, and keeping that conversation going. I know we've talked about this a couple of times over the course of the year, so it's good we can put some closure on that. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is our school committee, um, meeting dates for the summer. Uh, so in the backup packets, we got, there were three Mondays that were proposed, which was July 19, August 9, and August 30, all of those being six o'clock starts, which is our normal starting time. Um, are there any concerns at any of those times or dates with anybody from the committee?
Not now.
Okay, if there aren't no concerns, is there a motion to approve those dates, uh, as school committee, um, meeting dates?
A move to approve those, the dates as stated for our summer school committee meetings.
Is there a second? Uh, second, Ms. Limblon, roll call vote, Long, yes. Hayes?
Hayes, uh, yes. I'm sorry, that skates.
No, thanks. Gates?
Yes.
Uh, Limblon?
Yes.
And Brandalini?
Yes.
Mike, at some point, I'll get a set order, I promise.
See, it's harder than you thought, isn't it?
Not for me, I'm having fun.
No, they keep the order. That's the hard part.
I have it written down on a piece of paper. Uh, okay, so this is the second and last opportunity for a public comment from the public. Uh, Ms. Latenville, I apologize if I butchered her name.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you so much. I'm Anne Latenville from Whittier Drive, and I'm a parent in the district, but I'm also here tonight as a member of this Situate Together for Representation, Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity, also known as STRIDE, and we just wanted to express our support for celebrating and changing the, the name to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, uh, we were particularly happy to hear that the school committee, Nicole Brandalini especially, had involved the United American Indians of New England in, in asking for assistance in this initiative. We feel that recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Days is an opportunity to celebrate Native Peoples, both for their history and for their resiliency in the present. Um, and I just wanted to point out that according to Illuminative, which is a national native-led nonprofit committed to amplifying contemporary native voices, stories, and issues to advance justice, equity, and social impact, that research has shown that lack of representation of Native Peoples in mainstream society causes a, creates a void that limits the understanding and knowledge that Americans have of Native communities. Pop culture, media, and K through 12 education have institutionalized the erasure of Native Peoples, to the point that 78% of Americans admit that they know little to nothing about Native Americans. A significant number are also not sure Native Americans still exist. So, um, it's, it's really what you're, what you've done here is a very important step, and, um, we see quite a bit of opportunity for learning and exploration in the classroom. And again, knowing that the school committee does not develop curriculum, it, we're still very excited to hear about this important step. And again, thank Nicole for reaching out to Native American folks in, in, um, this endeavor, and visibility is really everything, so thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Uh, next, we have Ms. DeSabatino.
Hi, sorry, my son was trying to get in trouble right as I was going to unmute. Um, thank you very much, Jennifer DeSabatino, to Trudy Zlane, Heatherly School, and I also want to say thank you very much to the committee and especially to Ms. Brandalini for your work on this as a fellow Italian-American and someone who lived and studied and went to school in Italy. I'm very happy to see this because not only are all of the other issues around injustice and erasure of Native Americans important, but Christopher Columbus really isn't our guy. Um, most of us who are Italian-American are Southern Italian, and Christopher Columbus goes from Geneva in the North, and it's, they were not the same country at the time, and it's like somebody from France celebrating somebody from Germany. It's, it's not our culture, not our person, they even speak different languages, believe it or not. So on that element, thank you. Also, my son's great-grandmother was a Mapuche woman from Chile, she didn't even speak Spanish, she spoke Mapuzum. I probably said that incorrectly. Um, so this is not just theoretical, this is visibility for my son as well, and I appreciate it very much, and I hope that these sorts of efforts and integrating education about our Native Peoples, North and South America and throughout the world, will help to address what I think Mr. Taft is a little bit confused about, when we talk about the school committee members themselves do not harbor overt racism, but racism is baked into our curriculum, and that's what we're talking about, the fact that we focus too much, um, on European accomplishments and history and with, to the exclusion of almost every other culture, and we have a lot of ignorance around that. As a Spanish teacher, I do a lot of teaching to my students about what the cultures of Latin America did before the Spanish got there and what they continue to do, and it's, it's part of the curriculum. It's, DESI has created a new world language curriculum where we actually have to include social justice. So to ignore all of that is going against everything that is happening in education right now, and it also is just a matter of morality to not, not ignore a huge chunk of our population. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Adams?
You said Mr. Adams, right?
I did.
Okay, I just wanted to add on a little historical context that is going to be helpful right now, why an effort like this has some, some impact, important impact. We should recognize that during COVID, the most impacted people with COVID were the indigenous folks, and we also should know that there is a huge movement, if you will, to just acknowledge that the women. And we also should know that there is a huge movement, if you will, to just acknowledge that the women of indigenous cultures have been very, have been suffering in a number of ways, and have gone missing, and there's a movement, the MMWI movement, that this kind of helps to also acknowledge some of the things that what help is needed, actually. So I just wanted to add a little bit of context to that that is current, present right now. So it's appreciated. Just acknowledge that, that's all.
It's a great point. Thank you for sharing that. Seeing no other questions or comments, I'll move forward in the agenda. So the next item is the acceptance of minutes, but we didn't have any in our backup. In terms of correspondence, I know Dr. McGuire hit it earlier, but graduation is June 4, sorry. If any of us in the school committee are planning to attend, we should arrive at 5:45 near the tennis courts, so we can walk into the graduation. And then in our backup, we also received a modernized version of the 2021-2022 school calendar, which Superintendent Burkett, I'm assuming is going to go up on the website in the near future. Is there anything you wanted to add to that, or?
I'm sorry, I couldn't find my, I thought for a second my wife took the mute button and muted me again.
No, you're not listed as a co-host anymore, so I had to unmute you.
Okay, thank you. Can you repeat the question one more time, Slo? On the calendar?
The modernized calendar.
Yeah, so thank you. I want to thank Emily Matthews and Kim Peters. They've been teaming up on a lot of work on the website and keeping things current, modern, and they, they had noticed that our current school calendar was, you know, pretty outdated and just basically revamped it and brought it up to modern times. And so, you know, a lot of people have that on their refrigerator, their office, you know, desk, and you know, if we're going to be the best district in the world, little things matter, and so just the appearance of that. So two people that took that task on, and you have in your packets, and we'll be sharing that on the website now with our community, so you can print it out, and it, it looks top shelf, and as we explained tonight, there's a lot of really important dates on that calendar as well, and it's a reflection of our values. So we wanted to make it look really good and important. So that's the, those are the two people with the brain trust behind that work, and it's really of high quality, and it looks great. So I just wanted to thank them.
Great, thank you. Was there any other correspondence that the school committee received that they wanted to share? The next on the agenda is an update on the warrant from Dr. Dutch.
There is one warrant this week. It is warrant S210520, signed by committee member Limblom, totaling $353,194.91. Outside of the local budget, we had $18,808.80 for school lunch. We had $18,524 paid out of the IDEA grant, which is our special ed grant. Out of the local budget, the significant items were private school tuition, $166,637.78 to the May Institute, the Perkins School, and Amigo. Collaborative tuition, $53,453 to the South Shore Collaborative and the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. Our electric utility bill was $48,634.24. And those are the only significant items on this warrant. Be happy to answer any questions if you had any.
Are there any questions for Dr. Dutch?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there any other business that the school committee wanted to bring up as part of this meeting? None. So future agenda items, our next scheduled meeting is June 7. At that point, we'll look at the subcommittee liaison assignments, and I'll make sure that we get a copy of that, the current list, out to the committee prior to the meeting. And then in the next meeting or so, we'll also discuss the, the meeting dates for the next school year. Are there any other agenda items anyone wanted to put on the, on the agenda?
Mike, I think, I think Jimmy has had raised his hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to say regardless of where folks, I just want to make an announcement more than anything else, regardless where folks fall in the, in the span of emotions that tomorrow is the one, it's been one year since the death of George Floyd. So just acknowledge that people may be in different spaces emotionally, mentally, things like that. So it's important for us to take care of each other and ourselves. I just wanted to invite people to just really check in with each other tomorrow, regardless of where you, because people have a spectrum of emotions with it, and so just acknowledging that, let's take care of ourselves and our community and each other, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So that covers our agenda for tonight's meeting. At this point, the school committee, I'll entertain a motion for the school committee to enter executive session. We will not be returning to public session after that executive session. So this is the end of the, the public session for the, tonight's meeting. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session for reason number two.
So moved. Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Take a roll call vote. Brindalini?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Limblom?
Yes.
Long, yes. So thank you, everybody, for attending tonight's meeting. Have a great night.